Council meeting, 39. We always start it out with a bunch of allegiance. And Chase, would you start us out?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For those of you who are wearing masks or want to wear masks, feel free to do so. We're going to move things along pretty quickly tonight. We're not going to have presentations from the staff. We have four folks out on COVID. And so we're going to try to move things along very quickly and keep social distance. Just try to stay ahead of the curve, so to speak. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of July the 27th, the special meeting of July the 12th, first to 27? Ruth makes a motion to approve the minutes for the 27th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor? Unanimous. Did you get that, Ruth? You made the motion, Chase seconded it.
Thank you.
And how about for the special meeting on the 12th? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Fitzwater approves. Do I have a second? Seconded by Todd. Those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. And also August the 10th, meeting on August the 10th. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? So moved. Todd made the motion to accept. Do I have seconded by Brian? Those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for July 1st, 15th, and 29th are in your packet for information purposes only. Yeah, we didn't have minutes last week. That was so. We're kind of catching up there. Okay. Very quick update on our projects at the city. We, as you all know, we have several. Our large $8 million waste treatment upgrade project is well underway. We're having construction meetings every other Friday here with the contractors and the engineering firm and Marcus. And at least one of our board of works members usually stops in, and the mayor and clerk treasurer, and things are going along pretty well. We did have some concerns. Contractor was having some issues with subcontractors and getting materials. Some things were being backlog. And Al Song, the president of Commonwealth, who has taken this project on as the project manager himself, got involved, and things are starting to move along there. We've had a lid pulled off the digester out there for the first, some of the first steps to be worked on, and that necessitated having a crane that would lift this building. And some of you may have seen it out there, but it came out, lifted the lid off, it would come back when it's all taken care of and the new equipment's put in the digester and it will be replaced. But we are moving along. The other project out there that was, this project, if you remember, is financed through the Estate Revolving Fund. It's the program we're getting a loan, 20 years shot up, 20 or 30?
Uh, 20.
20.
20.
20.
20. Well, the only reason I hesitate was because we had talked about the other one that would be 30.
We had. Yeah, that's kind of where I was too, kind of confusing. One and a half percent interest. So basically free money for 20 years. So we're very fortunate here. That's what's financing that $8 million project. Our other project that we have going on out there was, remember, the whole building fell down? And that was a, boy, a real Band-Aid situation. Couldn't handle the humidity and such that's created by that environment over those digesters. And the insurance company's been involved, and they've done a great job. We're not going to have any out-of-pocket to replace that out there. And right now, it looks like we're going to be able to build a structure that is basically a greenhouse type of structure that's used in similar applications. So that is also moving along pretty good. That is also Commonwealth handling that project for us. We just, we're just concluding the Main Street Revitalization Program. That was a program that's taken about two years where the owners of buildings downtown could participate with some matching money and get some Oprah funds to upgrade the facade on their buildings, put in the windows, all sorts of things. And you've seen some of the changes that have gone on downtown. That program will, Oprah program will come to its conclusion August 31st. There will still be a couple of punch list things left, basically window installation. Nine windows affecting two buildings downtown will be put in at a later date, but they will be taken care of with the monies that are in the Oprah contract. Surprise, surprise, windows are very hard to get, right? Does that ring a bell? Yeah. They're hard to get, yeah. So we'll be delayed on that for a bit, but the good news is most of the program is finished. And that is Michiana Contracting that is taking care of that. Michiana Contracting are also the ones who did the upgrading and painting of City Hall, desperately needed for a long time, and that has been completed. We have one other project left, and the local glass company has to install a new...
Drive-up window and drawer.
Yeah.
Our drawer is seeing better days.
Yeah.
The microphone, if anybody uses our drive-up, you know either we can't hear you or you can't hear us, or both.
Exactly.
So that will be a welcome replacement for...
It will. It will. It'll be nice. But boy, if you haven't taken a good look at the building, you need to. It looks really, really nice. The other aspect that Michiana is working on, on September the 13th, they will start the installation of our downtown LED lights, the 27 lights going downtown. And they are telling us they can install four, take down and install four of those a day. Pretty ambitious, but they're telling us four a day, and in two weeks they'll have it completed. So we should have some breathing room before the chili cook-off and red hot car show on the 9th. Of course, along with that, will be the speakers that are being installed, with the trailhead for the speaker system being a WROI, and plugins available at different spots to allow a DJ to remotely do something like the car shows DJ that they bring in. Those also will start that same week, the 13th. Michiana is also, they have contracted to paint our traffic signal poles, same color to match our lights downtown. Lights will be LED and very, very, you know, nice type of lighting. The bases will have more antique look to them. So it should look very, very nice. All of you have seen the NDOT project going on, Old 31 and 9, or 14th. That shall be concluded here pretty soon. We're going to have a meeting first of September with NDOT to discuss any issues that might have come up, punch list things, if you will, for that. The city's plan is next year's paving program. We're wanting to take the rest of Main Street down and pay bid the rest of the way out to Monticello Road. And that will look, everything will look very nice after that's done, and everything gets restriked, looks pretty good with the new lights in there. It'll all look pretty good downtown, plus the fact that some of the fronts downtown will be new and vibrant. Should look like a different Rochester. Again, Michiana Contracting is working on all of that. Michiana Contracting has been very, very good. The MSRP program, part of the difficulty with it, we had to go at it three different times just to get contractors to bid on it. There wasn't enough meat on the bone, some of them thought, for a project. You know, contractors get a little gidgety when they're taking on something that they don't know what's underneath it. And Michiana has been very good. Hanging holes. Okay. Landing good, it's finishing up the concrete work on the sidewalks downtown. It'll pour tomorrow. So Ruth, you'll have that big hole gone tomorrow, okay?
Good.
I know. I know that's been a tough thing to deal with.
But it'll still be protected. They did a really, did a good job.
He did a nice job of securing it, didn't he?
Well, on the other side, it's really nice.
Oh, the other side looks good.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
Well, he told me on two sides, he thought he had one that would be real good.
Okay. My side. Kind of used to that.
No, no, he'll do a great job with it.
Yeah, they did good.
So that should be finishing up within the week. The school view lift station is on schedule. We have a contractor out of the Mishawaka area, TGV, that's doing that. Interesting company, owned by two brothers who were veterans, and 85% of their workforce is veterans. Yeah, yeah. Great company, doing some good stuff. They ran into one difficulty out there. You know, they move a lot of dirt, a lot of dirt. They're going down 30 feet, and they found a tile out there that was, water was just flowing out of it. They didn't know whose it was, what it was, no records anywhere, nothing at the county. The surveyor had nothing, nothing anywhere. Somebody has just thrown a tile in out there. But it looks like it's very much necessary for the farm ground to keep it drained out there. So we had a meeting early one morning after it was found and had Dr. Hoff in here, who owns the property, and the Commonwealth engineering folks, or I'm sorry, HWC, John Query Engineering folks were involved with that, and the TGV folks, and within 40 minutes, we worked out a solution. And Dr. Hoff helped out with this a lot. He allowed more of his property out there to be approached on so that we could loop the system and keep it running while we did our work, and then when it's done, we'll put it back the way it was. Because it was just running water right into where we had to do our construction. So that's going on pretty well. That's the only rough pickup they found, but we didn't lose one day. So that's moving on pretty good. And we're still looking, Rick, at middle to late October for the conclusion. We have USI, the engineering firm. We've contracted them to put together a plan for Apache Drive, which is the street that would connect the area out there, Schnabel Tier is located, going to the north with Highway 14. There were always some plans to do that, but never an official, official plan and such. So we're having that put together, and hopefully next year's community crossing offerings will be able to take advantage of that and start that project. I'm sure many of you have heard that the Park Board is delved into with some private folks who wanted to step up and sponsor this, splash pad for our main park. And there's been some construction donation for that, and there's private funds being raised for that. The city's contribution was through the Water Board. Free water, right? Right, Lloyd?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Free water to make the splash pad go.
And property.
Pardon me?
And property.
And, well, of course, and property. It can't be moved.
No.
And then, you know, it's like any other private venture. Manitowoc Mountain, those of you who remember Manitowoc Mountain, that was a public venture and built by the public and then turned over to the city for maintenance. And by the way, we, how old's Manitowoc Mountain?
Nineties.
Ninety-eight.
Six or seven?
Ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
So mid-nineties. We'll go with that.
Yeah. We had a consultant in here who is an expert for ADA playground equipment, which we're going to make a substantial investment, move forward with some different playground equipment in our main park. Her comment was, you know, we see a lot of these Manitowoc Mountain kinds of projects, but we never see any this old, this well-maintained. And it does look pretty good out there. Just finished redoing the whole thing and putting in the rubber porch, which has been very, very nice. So that's happening out there. On the other side of town, in the park department's world, pickle, four pickleball courts are going in behind the swimming pool where the old parking lot was located. The parking lot was utilized quite a bit when the Pro Shop was over there, and it has not been utilized since. We're not talking about the parking lot, right? The butt's right up to the golf course, the one behind it. And it's just right for that, and we're going to have it paved along during our paving project here to move forward so that the folks who want to invest in that will have the place to put their monies to build the pickleball courts. So that's going on. Also, it's another public venture. It's, you know, I had one gentleman in here the other day saying, you know, there are people who are anxious to contribute to this because they want to make sure they can say, "We all made that thing. We all built that thing." We saw the same kind of passion and interest in Rochester when we did the ninth Main Street Park. That was all private donations, for the most part. We just completed a new upgrade and much-needed electrical and control change-out to our irrigation system out of the golf course. It's been living for about seven years after it got struck by lightning several years ago. And we kind of got smart. We decided that, you know, that's kind of like a list station a lot. So we got our folks involved now who are involved in helping us keep our 16 list stations with our waste treatment plant in order. They've been pulled into this one, our irrigation station. So we've got it upgraded and electricals upgraded. It is now fully protected from lightning and such. We can breathe easier there. And that goes out, you don't get any water off the golf course. That's kind of tough these days. So that's, that's going on. That's a, that's a very quick rundown. We have a couple other projects where there isn't work going on yet, but we are doing the due diligence, the design work and such. We're having a new salt barn built out at the street department. Our salt barn was in dire need of some help. As you know, Rick, those things take a beat. It's a lot of weight and everything, and we're already there. So we're, we're having a new barn structure put together. It's going to take a lot of concrete and such, but it'll last a long, long time. And we've got a street department expansion over at the forest farms, old building, some new siding and such, doing some upgrades over there. That's going on right now. We're in conversations with Republic, the landfill, talking about a forced main with basically a pipeline from their place to our waste treatment plant so they can send the leachate pipeline rather than truck it to us. They have been trucking it to us. We started that first one here. And that last look was 90 million gallons of leachate in the process this last year. Once we do something with a transmission line, which they are, they're talking to us about paying for it themselves, and then, like any other development program that a construction people would do, or builders, once they put the infrastructure in place and they dedicate it over to the city and we end up indicating it. So we're in conversations with that. That would make the leachate process go up to about 12 to 15 million gallons. So that is in process right now. We have also some research being done to complete a water system model. We've had some conversations with folks at Foundry about the water tower over there just north of Foundry. We're taking a look at what it would take to potentially relocate that. And that takes an engineering study, but you just don't pick those up. So there's a lot on the plate right now, a lot going on. We're seeing some fruits of our labors. Nothing happens real fast, though. Anybody have any questions? Okay. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing regarding the 2022 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilman Garrett. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Fitzwater. And those in favor, open the public meeting. And it's unanimous. Public meeting is now open. Turn it over to Eric.
No.
No?
Not for the budget.
Oh, I see.
Hey, go ahead, Eric. Here, I'll hand it to you.
That's why Eric's jacking.
Well, I'll pass the ball back to you just a little bit, okay?
Now, wait a minute. And he was Baker Tilly?
He is.
Okay. You didn't contract him?
I did not.
Oh, okay. I remember those days.
There's a reason he's wearing a jacket now.
I remember those days. We don't do that.
No, we don't do that. But no, actually, you will be hearing for Mayor Charlie in the next public hearing. No, tonight is just our public hearing with our notice to taxpayers that was put out and to have our first reading for the budget. There's been, the only update that I have is that when I met with DLGF, we did shift our levy a little bit to make sure that we had everybody covered in. We are going to be walking in with more than 20% operating balances for all of our tax-supported funds. So I did have to shift, I took some of it, we normally put most of it into the general fund because obviously that's our largest fund. But the MVH and parks both have some work. They had a little extra expense going into next year because of equipment needs, obviously some infrastructure needs. So we just shifted the levy a little bit. We're taking a little less at the general, giving those guys a little bit more. We're still going to be over, I think it was close to 30% across the board, average. So we're still doing well. I, we, this is one of those times where we just don't know where our income tax monies are going to end up because of, with COVID in the last 18 months or so. There's going to be, I think, some, some decline in that regard moving into next year. So that'll impact us just a little bit, but our cash reserves are very comfortable right now, so we should be okay affording all of our budget requests. And so with that said, our proposed, where did I grab the wrong one? I probably did. You have in front of you the notice to taxpayers, which has our levy percentage differences. So in your packet, our general fund decreased it by 33.79%. We increased MVH 36.99. Cumulative fire state, it went up about .52, but that is a calculation based on a cumulative fund that's calculated at the state level. So that wasn't anything, we didn't add any more to it or take anything away. The parks, that one went up, most significantly, that one went up by 96.76% of the levy. And CCD, again, that's a calculation by the state. That's not something that we do. So overall, I think the total increase for the levy went up from, our maximum levy was 33,12,707, and our current tax levy is 31,98,400. So not quite 200,000. So I'd say we're pretty well holding steady. Our biggest increases have been salaries. That's usually where we try to, and we have the guys shave back so when we need the department heads, as you guys were here for the department head requests. That's all I have for that, unless there's public comments or questions.
Any comments from council?
I would, I would state that, just an opinion, that it's going to be something that's going to be part of the process. The wage situation is going to continue to get a lot of scrutiny. The way, the labor situation is not only locally, but everywhere. Just an observation.
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. Kind of in the same conversation, we will be bringing, or I'll be bringing, the salary ordinance to you guys, and I think Ted and I are going to have to sit down and really scrutinize that moving into next year for that reason. So the budget, we tried to make sure that we were going to cover any changes that we might make in that regard ahead of time. So hopefully we've got that well covered in the budget, whatever that looks like and whatever conversation we have with the salary ordinance for next month.
No comments? Any comments from the public? Okay. We should have the first reading then.
I.
Moved to close.
Oh, moved to close. Yeah, I'm sorry. Do I have a move to close the public meeting?
So moved. I'm sorry.
Fitzwater moved, and Garrett seconded. Those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Public meeting is closed. Now I would entertain a motion for the first reading of the 2022 budget. Sorry. Todd moved, and John seconded.
Hang on.
He's got a copy of it.
Well, that's what I was looking for. It left away on my desk. Okay.
Well, we'll do it this way. Because the budget hasn't changed, so it'll be ordinance 11-2021. And who wants to, who gets nominated to read? Or do you want me to just read the numbers?
Right.
Do you want me to go ahead and read the numbers?
Why, why she? Why do it?
Okay. So this will be, this will be ordinance 11-2021, and this will be the budget for the 2022, beginning January 1st, 2022, and running through December 31st, 2022. For the general fund, or excuse me, for the Casino Riverboat Fund, the budget estimate's 136,000, rainy days 200,000. General fund is 3,651,150. Fire pension is 36,400. Police pension 88,200. Local road and street 125,000. Motor vehicle highway 1,395,700. Cumulative fire 50,000. Parks general is 1,091,100. Cumulative capital improvement is 76,000. Cumulative capital development 315,000. Economic development 350,000. Redevelopment general 246,500. Lowest public safety 297,000. Drug interdiction and investigation 10,000. City ordinance 10,000. Non-reverting park operating 102,800. Non-reverting park capital improvement 310,000. Police continuing ed 10,000. DEA asset recovery 20,000. Meadow Creek maintenance 22,000. State grants fund 920,000. Federal grants fund 800,000. For a total of $10,262,850. And of those, the ones that are tax levied are general, MVH or motor vehicle highway, cumulative fire, park... And of those, the ones that are tax levied are general, MVAH or motor vehicle highway, cumulative fire, park, cumulative capital development.
Right. Yeah, a lot of people get confused over the utilities. The utilities are not tax-supported.
Correct. Well, we have a lot of home rule funds that are not tax-supported as well.
As well, yeah. Any discussion about the first reading? I would entertain.
Actually, it'll be the second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the second.
Introduction was lost.
I would entertain a motion for the third reading by title only.
So move. I'm sorry.
Moved by Wilson, seconded by Garrett. Those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, Shadi, could you do the third reading for us by title only?
Ordinance 11-2021, 2022 budget. Those titles are pretty simple.
You did that well.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost like you just did the second one too, so that was very good. Any discussion? I have a motion to approve 11-2021. Ruth made the motion. Wilson seconded. Those in favor? And it's passed unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Now I think we can bring Eric into the program.
Yes, now it's Eric's turn.
We've got ordinance 10-2021, amending water rates. It's presented. I believe we have a water board member here tonight as well. Lloyd Jennings. Nice to have you here, Lloyd. Yeah, yeah, we'll have to open a public hearing as well for this. I have a motion for that.
So move.
Second.
Second.
And I, Fitzwater seconded by Thompson. Those in favor? Okay, public meeting is now open. Okay, you'd like to explain what's going on. I mean, first of all, I'd like to say that the new Sentinel was, did you read the new Sentinel article?
Yeah, I was sitting on the copy, so hopefully I can say a few things I think may be clear.
Clear it, clear that. There was, yeah, misconceptions there.
Yep. Eric Walsh, Baker Tilly, good to be back in front of you again. Tonight, I'll be pretty brief for the public hearing. But in terms of some of the things in that article, that what you're seeing before you, it is a full ordinance, several changes, but a lot of this is really just cleaning up some old language, as well as updating some of your miscellaneous fees and charges within the water utility. I think the biggest thing to make sure and understand is for current in-city residential customers, there's no rate adjustment at all for them. The current rates for in-city customers are staying the same. So nothing is changing there. The changes to the ordinance, I'll kind of go through the laundry list, are meter deposits will be increasing. To give you an idea of what they're increasing by, a residential meter deposit will be going up $15. That's prospectively. So if you've already got a meter deposit on the books, et cetera, it's just if you go in and have to put a new meter deposit in, that's the increase there. There is a system development charge being proposed, similar to what you already have in wastewater. This is new construction only. So this does not affect many current houses, et cetera, businesses in, in the city. So if a new residential home is built and then taps into the water utility, typically that would be a 5/8 inch water meter. That home would pay a $500 one-time system development charge. What system development charge is just as you have for wastewater or used for, or it's really growth paying for growth? As you continue to have growth, you have to reinvest into your system, expand it, have more capacity, et cetera. So those dollars, as new developments are done, businesses tap on, et cetera, those dollars are then used for expansion down the road.
If I could interrupt and interject, what we found out in going through this study, this due diligence, there've been a lot of changes in the Rochester persona, if you will, over the years. There was very little development. We didn't have a south end of town bringing in a pilot for a wings, our Starbucks, some of the other things that we've seen from up out there. And when these people come to us for the development process, they'd ask what it would cost for sewer and water hook up. We'd tell them, for years, we'd just use the hookup. And they'd say, no, 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 no. We want to know what it's going to cost us. You know, $1,000 or 500, whatever the case may be. You're missing the boat. We don't put, we haven't put anything in anywhere that it wasn't at least $4,000 for a development fee, development charge when your businesses and industries are coming on board. So I just wanted to throw that out. We have been a little behind in that academic world.
In the mayorhead, an example of, you know, 5/8 inch meter is typical residential. They're going to pay 500 per house that would hook up. For instance, like a wings or a commercial property, that may be like a 2-inch meter. A 2-inch meter, and this is based on capacity, they would pay $4,000 for that hookup. So the larger your water meter, obviously, the more capacity you can draw out of the system, so the larger your fee to hook in. Very common, many, many communities throughout the state of Indiana have similar charges. It's really growth paying for future growth. The fourth item that's changing in your ordinance is the service charges. And I don't know, Derek, if you want to speak to any of this, but it's really just doubling your current, basically, call-out rate if it's after hours or on the weekends. Because if you want to speak to that, because you pay overtime.
Yeah, we pay overtime, minimum two-hour call-out for our guys to go out for anything that's after hours or on the weekends.
So it's really just updating the fees to catch up to that. Where currently, if it's within hours, it's $20 for the call-out. If it's after hours, weekends, it goes to the $40. The fifth change is your sprinkler rates. So this would only affect commercial and, for commercial properties that have a sprinkler system. Currently, right now, the rate is the same for every sprinkler size. You have sprinklers ranging in size from 2 inches to 10 inches. American Waterworks Association puts out really rate-making principles nationwide. Sprinklers work the same as a meter. That the larger your sprinkler system, the more capacity you can draw out of the system. No one ever wants to use a sprinkler system, but your water system has to be sized large enough that if the 10-inch sprinkler, there's a fire, it can fight that fire and send the gallons per minute needed. So you would almost always, well, you would see if you keep cost of service principles, a larger sprinkler system would have a higher rate than a smaller sprinkler system. That probably makes common sense to most people. Your rate right now is regardless of your sprinkler system, you're paying $354 a year for that. This changes to now be based on AWWA principles, American Waterworks Association, where based on your size, you pay a capacity, or a percentage higher based on the capacity you're drawing. So to give you an example, a 4-inch sprinkler system, which you have three of those in the city, their charge will go from $354 a year down to $207 a year. They actually get a decrease in that. If you are a 6-inch sprinkler system, which is the majority of yours, you have 27 of those in city limits. Right now, they're paying $354 a year. Those commercial properties now will pay $600 a year. Again, that's based on that capacity variable. On your largest one, which you have two of them, that are at 10-inch sprinkler systems, two of the industrials, they will be going to $2,300 per year versus a $354. That shows you kind of how much the discrepancy really was based on the capacity, their ability to draw versus what they've been paying historically. And then the final change is for outside city customers, similar to what you already have in the wastewater, there will be a rate differential now, as allowed by state statute. So the outside city customers will pay, be paying approximately 14% higher than the inside city customers. What that equates to is someone that's a minimum bill outside the city, it's a $1.73 increase per month for that outside city bill. Again, does not change anything in the inside city rates. This is outside only. An average residential home outside city limits probably uses somewhere between 4,000 and 6,000 gallons per month. They would see their bill, water only, go up about $2.50 to $3.00 a month, based on this differential. Again, this is common practice throughout the state of Indiana. It's really based on the principle that without the city and city government, there is no municipal utilities. Well, anyone outside of city limits pays no city taxes, et cetera. So that's why there's allowable for these differentials on your utility bills. Because people inside the city that pay city property taxes, that goes to pay things like overhead costs, salaries, wages related to the whole city working. And without the city being here, you wouldn't have the utilities provide those outside city customers in the first place. So I'll kind of circle back where I started in, just to clear up some things. No rate adjustment to inside city water customers.
Very good.
Counsel, any other questions? I don't open up the public. Anybody have any questions or comments? Yeah, I just add, and I think you hit it pretty well, the outside the city increase rates. Yeah, they're not paying city taxes and receiving some of the city benefits though in the form of the utilities. So, you know, either you either have a fee for that, which we're now implementing on your annex. Okay, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Fitzwater's moved. Wilson seconded. Those in favor? Do I have a motion for the first reading of ordinance 10-2021?
Ted, forgive me. I was looking at the wrong line item on the ordinance. Before you move into the water rate, that one you, that was the one that you did the first reading last night.
That we had the first reading.
The budget. What I need to do is, we need to have the council vacate the vote on the budget. And then we will have, we will amend this to be the first reading, and then we will bring back for final vote on the budget ordinance at the September's meeting. I flip-fopped my notes on here. So that's, I was looking at second, third reading, but it was for the water ordinance. So I apologize.
This is the 24th.
I know where he's going with this.
Shadi made one mistake. August the 24th. I want that recorded.
See what I have to put up with, Rick?
It is so rare, you know?
But I own it. I think I missed it. So I do, I will stand up and say, I wholly apologize for that. So if you could, if somebody would make a motion to vacate the vote and change this to be the first reading on the budget.
The budget hearing vote?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes. Motion, motion to vacate and change the second reading to the first reading.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the budget hearing vote to vacate it and change the first reading to the second?
So move.
Moved by Garrett, seconded by Todd. Those in favor of doing that? Okay, and then we will have the third reading at the next.
Yes, in September and, and the.
Clarification for, for the water that we.
That one is the second and third reading for September. She did the first reading last night.
We had the first reading, great. Okay, do I have a motion and moving along? Thank you for admitting that.
You're welcome. I'll post your chance.
For sure.
We had one last year too, didn't we? One mistake, yeah.
Last year, we just don't want to talk about it.
Do I have a motion for the second reading ordinance 10-2021, amending the water rates? By, by title only. Wilson makes the motions. Chase seconded those in favor. Unanimous. Shadi, you want to read that one as well?
I don't want to, sure.
By title only.
Ordinance number 10-2021, an ordinance regarding water rates and fees.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, was there any?
Any discussion.
Discussion, yeah, discussion. Okay, do I have a motion to suspend the moves and have the third reading of 10-2021?
By title only.
Okay, but you're, you're helping her out. That's great.
Thank you, Brian.
By title only. Do we have a move by Wilson, seconded by Fitzwater?
You two go.
Okay. All right, those in favor, unanimous. Okay. By title only, Shadi?
Yes. Ordinance number 10-2021, an ordinance regarding water rates and fees.
Okay. And do I have a motion to approve 10-2021? Ruth makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor? Thank you all. Now, we're all, we're all clean on all that now, right? Okay.
Thank you.
You betcha. Okay, we move right down. We do not have the department heads here tonight for any reports. Missed it, beginning of the meeting. We have four of our staff out in COVID. So that's a pretty big chunk out of our group.
Derek's here, he's on vacation.
Derek's not on vacation.
And he's not?
No, he's not on vacation. Yeah.
Not on vacation.
Actually.
I remember Brian was on vacation.
Brian, that's supposed to be my life.
Yeah, yeah, actually, he can't have vacation for at least two months now. He's running three departments, so.
Hey, by the way, did you know that?
No, but I'll help with me.
No, it's, yeah, it's not really a laughable matter. We have some pretty sick people right now, so. Without getting into the names or anything, just please keep them in your prayers, if you will. It's serious stuff. Okay, we've got some committee.
Ted, if I may interrupt you, you skipped something under communications.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
The discussion for the ARPA funds? Because you wanted to.
Oh, I don't, I don't have that on mine, but yeah, we did.
Well, I asked you if you wanted to. I thought I'd give you a new topic. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The, under communications, the ARPA request and set a date for study session to formalize the plan, which we'll need to include Eric with, I believe. Or I would feel more comfortable with, let me put it that way. First of all, we had a COVID call on Friday, and one of the conversations we had was helping with the, we, at our conversation we met, one of the things we talked about was helping out the health department, but we don't have a health department. Well, it seems that there may be a need. So Ted had suggested, and I did not get that letter printed, I only needed it for claims. One of the things that we talked about.
I forwarded it to all the councils.
Would be to utilize 50,000 of that and.
The ARPA funds.
Of the ARPA funds and donate that to the Hope County Health Department. Now, we have an appropriation available in one of our funds out of the Riverboat Fund that I can go ahead and write that check this week. If you approve that, and then when we actually formalize our plan for the ARP money, we'll make sure that we include that as a line item because that has to be identified in our plan before we can actually spend it out of the ARPA fund itself. So I can't cut any, any monies out of that fund until we have a plan that is voted on, approved, passed, and stamped. So, but we do have available funds that we can use if you, the council feels that that is appropriate to utilize those funds for that now, and then we can replenish that fund.
What we found, we had a call last week, and Rick was part of it as well. There's a real need for some testing.
These two ladies from the health department too, getting.
Oh, my gosh, you didn't recognize it with your hands on. Oh, wow. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, guys.
Seriously, thank you. We really, Dawn, you've been at it for a while.
That's Misty. I'm Dawn. Ted.
He doesn't have his glasses on.
Listen, I don't have my glasses on yet. I'm a little vain, so I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see either one of you. I'm just going back. Really appreciate it. We really do, you guys. You know, the, I'm just going to give you a pat on the back while you're here. Over at the senior center, when you were running the vaccination process, I don't know that I've ever seen a smoother setup. You guys did a very fine job. And we found out at our meeting last week that there is a need for testing. The drugstores and everything, periodically, they're running out of kids, you've got backlog of people that need to be tested. Hospital will test people if they have a doctor's order. So there's a real need, and it was suggested that the drive-through be set up again. You know, that we had on the south end of town for a time period. Were, were you able to get the same facility lined up?
Um, right now, we are kind of up in the air. It is allowed, and we've gotten the blessing there, yes.
Thank you to Jim's career.
Yes, I think, yes, yes.
First and foremost, ready to do that. But as the state is talking, they're thinking that we may have to transition things into a vaccination site as well. And I'm just not so sure that that location is going to be able to accommodate both testing and vaccination.
Well, I talked to Dr. Rayburn over the weekend about coming to the council and asking for 50,000 of our ARPA funds, which, by the way, folks, you know, the state throws this money at you for COVID. There's no better reason for spending it than this. I mean, this is directly helping our community. And so he was telling me that the last test site, it's about $38,000 to run the whole thing. This would leave an extra 12 for some extra personnel that might be needed and maybe transforming that into the SHOT program as well. So that, that's where this suggestion has come from. We didn't have anything definitively for the monies when we had our meeting the other day, so I think we'd be best to participate. We, you know, the county picked up the tab for everything last time. We certainly benefited by the city residents being able to be tested. Just, just for information purposes, how many people, what percentage of the county is inoculated?
We're about forty percent.
Forty percent. And the state average, fifty, maybe?
Fifty-three percent.
Fifty-three percent, okay.
Yeah.
Not, not too far off. But at any rate, I sent you folks the letter. I entertained some conversation about it.
I agree wholeheartedly. I know that Miami and Cosiasko, all health departments have suggested that I talk to people about it, and that they all could use extra funding, and I think it's a good idea to get, I think it's a good idea to get started, give some money out there, get some testing done, shots opened, some quick tests, and whatever they need, whatever they can use it for.
Well, you know, John.
Like I say, it's a, it's a good way to spend that money.
Our personal situation here, one of our folks that's now home state in recovery had to go to North Manchester to be tested. Went to the drugstore and weren't available, couldn't get in the hospital without a doctor's order, so he just ended up going to North Manchester. So, you know, we need to jump in the water.
I know people that have had to travel quite a distance for it also. It's, yeah, I'm all for it.
The other, the other thing too, that we found out with our, with our own experience here is, just as soon as you find out what you have, they can start that protocol, and you start, start getting well, so.
Shall I make a motion?
Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion that we do donate fifty thousand dollars, the way Shawna stipulated it earlier, you know, and then take it.
Take it from the, our Riverboat Fund for now, for this pay.
Temporarily, yeah.
Yep. I know what I said, so I'll put it in the minutes.
Are you sure? That is my vote.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor? Yeah, it's unanimous. Thank you, folks. It's a, it's a no-brainer. It really is. Again, ladies, thank you very much. Do you have anything else you'd like to tell us? No?
Keep us in your prayers.
For sure. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Shawna, for bringing me back, even though it wasn't on my agenda. Thank you.
Well, I laid one up there for you, but you all play musical chairs, so I'm sorry. Good thing I didn't get on agenda because he wasn't here.
You know, it's one thing about Shawna, she never plays medical stakes, but when she does, she always has a musical. Thanks, Shawna.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll have a downtown partnership, I'll have a Lake Menno Association. Ruth area by the.
Um, North Shore State asked if they could replant their, their disaline because they had widened the water retention. Which then eliminated a place to buy a house. They built, so.
Who is the doctor? Said Dr. Hall.
Right, out there. So, and then instead of having an inconsistent number, plating, so the numbers can be consistent, so. And we approved it. We had a small discussion about it. It might be a little more fun for you to explain what the numbers missing.
But why the numbers weren't current?
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That did, yeah.
Yes, that was the thing that was actually, and then we had Mr. Russell talk.
Mr. Phillips.
Phillips, Russell Phillips, yeah. He wanted to put his opinion about doing solar energy and allowing only a certain amount in, and wanted us to at least think about it. And then apparently, the nickel plate trail in other counties has had issues with people taking the things there by the road and recycling them, taking them off, you know, so that you know that a road is coming. And some other county, yes, some other counties have taken them off. We haven't, that we know of, we haven't yet had that problem in our counties. Our people have actually stolen them for, for money. But if that was to happen, they wanted to know their protocol to, you know, where, where, how do I start if we wanted to remove that? So they asked the advice of that, so.
You know, it hasn't had a rapid trail here to make the statement. This is a crazy world we're in. You know, our, our service organization, the Legion, and the PFW had to quit putting metal markers on the veterans' graves because they were being stolen to recycle. They had to go to a plastic. It's a crazy world.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ruth. Goodness, not your Fedco report. Terry, you want to take that?
Yeah, um, been relatively busy lately. We did make the decisions on the Oprah COVID grant, so we had two hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred dollars that went to, it was a twenty-six or twenty, or will be going to twenty-six or twenty-seven, small businesses, restaurants, mom and pop businesses, mostly. I think we had twenty-six or twenty-seven businesses awarded. We're still waiting on the hurdles from Oprah to get the actual funds and get those dispersed, but we're hoping that's before the end of the month. Talked to eight, eight other small businesses, including Verizon and Dollar General. Verizon's looking to put a shop here on the south end of town. John Dollar General's looking at a couple of different locations in the county. Rochester Metal Products, potential expansion there. I know you're working with the company on that alongside myself, so.
You know, a real great conversation with Mr. Percy.
The city infrastructure, so a big deal living there. Business in from North Carolina yesterday, looking at two local buildings, the Wabash Avenue building and the Acne building. They seem to be most interested in the Wabash building, cause of the rail access. A leak from Indianapolis on that same building, the Wabash Avenue building, for a cryptocurrency mining operation because of the adjacent Duke power line. The Georgia Company, again, Ted and I have been working on that one. They're kind of in a holding pattern right now. The new guy, after working with one predominantly for about four months, the new guy is out with COVID now, in the hospital, actually.
Oh, kid. Oh, boy.
Ryan.
Ryan, yeah.
Yeah, I talked to Joe today, so. But if their item permit issues are cleared up, state of Indiana, Joe didn't think that's going to be two owners for them. We're still waiting for some information. Looks like Rochester's our first spot, our first choice for landing in the state of Indiana.
Does he have any idea, Terry, that there could be potential to lose that building?
Yes, yeah. And you mentioned he understands that. I had been aware of that maybe a couple of weeks ago when the North Carolina company called about it. Interesting, it's actually a company that I talked to three years ago, was looking at the building. And he said, that's, that's fine. Rochester's still our first choice, and we're six months out. If there's nothing available, we look at possibly putting up a new building. So they're operational here.
Great.
The Ready Grant Program, that's a regional economic acceleration and development initiative, Indiana Economic Development Corporation has put out five hundred million dollars to award ten regions up to fifty million dollars to bring in up to additional hundred fifty million dollars in private investment. Top twenty-five projects in, right now, from Fulton County include a sewer extension for housing development and then also water and sewer for hotel and apartments on the south end of the city. Just got the plan from the developer on the hotel yesterday. Met with the landowners on that, and haven't followed up with the developer yet, but intend to, hopefully tomorrow. Pretty big project, including some apartments, some new retail spaces, and hospitality space of the hotel. A lot of other projects discussed there. There's a list as long as my arm of workforce development initiatives. The Boat Tech Center at Rochester Schools Learning Center was in our project list. It looks like it's probably funded otherwise. I think the theater made the list. I think that was it from Fulton County. Blacker Drive, sorting through the water bids to extend water for service. We did receive RMC, Fulton County RMC, did receive the grant from USDA that would then turn into a loan to Fedco that would cover the cost, almost cover the cost of the road and the water extension. Got one buyer out of Elkhart County, hopefully a buyer, buyer or prospect that's looking at probably two lots, which would really help us narrow the gap on what we're gonna need to make sure we get that water and road in paved this year. Likely by the end of September, early October, if we can move the money that quickly. And then one other local company is looking at potential building at Blacker, or taking most of my time by the end of September. Just a quick update on a few projects. Any questions or?
The developments south of town with the hotel and the apartment situation, any timeframe on that?
Again, I haven't talked to the developer just yet. The landowners are still jockeying back and forth on whether they're going to sell the land or possibly include the land and some cash as a partnership, so a few wrinkles to be ironed out, I think, as soon as those things are discussed. The prospectus really had a lot of state and federal grant funding in it, which I, which I thought was a pretty high number. So that's one question, where exactly are those funds coming from? I don't really have a specific timeline, but I could have it as, as early as tomorrow or as soon as I can touch base with Anders, so.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Terry?
The gentleman from, from North Carolina yesterday stayed at our hotel one night, and they, this weekend, were asking if they're gonna send any place else.
Yeah, that's kind of an old story.
I said soon.
Yeah, hopefully soon, so.
And Rochester Metal, actually, Brad actually called me today and asked what the potential for getting some new housing and apartments, an apartment specifically. He's like, one of the problems we're having with hiring people is they don't have a, you know, there's not a diversity of housing in the community. So it's like, as a matter of fact, I've got a plan here for, through, you know, I can't really put numbers out there, but phase one is over a hundred and thirty rooms in an apartment complex or apartments, so. Pretty big project, big number on it. Working through it right now.
Mr. Percy was really pulling his hair out over the labor situation and the market out there, how slim it is.
Bill said yesterday at the, he's the director of manufacturing, he said yesterday at the chamber luncheon that they would hire thirty or forty right now if they could find people.
Any questions for Terry? Thanks, Terry.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, Chase, how about Parkport? Okay, uh, basically, the conversations at the Parkport the other night were relative to some of the projects going on that I already mentioned. A report, the golf course is doing very well. We're looking forward to seeing, into the year figures. It's, it's, seems to have made a turnaround. The council will be very pleased to see what's happened. The pool, we had an issue at the pool that we've had to deal with that has brought to a tired tension and some procedural changes for next year. I didn't realize we're one of the very few pools anywhere, including YMCA's, that still have a diving board. A lot of these places have taken the diving board out. We got a substantial accident about three, four weeks, almost a month ago. Kid did a flip and hit his back, his head on the diving board. Yeah, that's, it's not real forgiving, Joe. It's, and it led to our discovering some things we need to change. You know how many different kinds of diving boards there are? I know now more about diving boards than I ever. There's about twelve different kinds of diving boards. Well, I mean, you, you, you're supposed to academically take a look at those, how you choose them. But at any rate, we've, we've got a procedural change going in place as to what will be allowed in using the diving board, and lifeguards will be instructed as such, so. That was, that was a pretty, pretty in-depth discussion. We had Bob Hoffman, our safety coordinator, do a rather in-depth study of the accident, what had happened, but then moving forward. So that was pretty much our meeting. Party's not here. Solid Waste and Animal Adoption Center. Todd?
Both of those groups have moved to meetings every other month, so we did not have a meeting this one.
You had an easy month? Okay. Tree Board and EMS, Brian?
Tree Board, met on August fifth. All the members were there. Since there's been changes and members through the years, I was wondering who is on the board now. John Bowers, Matt Frank, Jim Mulligan, Eric Binninger.
Good group.
Yeah, boy, yeah. And there's a good news, there's another company that was in the area, I guess a newer company, so they may be able to, maybe some additional bidders for the contracts that we have, so that'd be good.
Tree removal contracts.
Competition's always good. And one, I think one or both of the guys are arborists, which is something we're looking to contract out, so that's one two or three that are there. The current contracts, they were a little behind on something that I mentioned in the last meeting. They were a little behind. Part of it was they couldn't get parts for their grinder. There's the others. Wait for the parts to come in. Hopefully, there's time to be done by the end of July. They talked about being done that the week after the meeting, so hopefully it'll be done by now.
That was for the stump removal?
Yes, well, the trees and the stumps too.
Oh, right, for the trees?
Oh, the stumps.
Stumps, yeah.
But part of the contract is, once the tree comes down, we get the stump done.
Yeah. But with no parts, they're stumped. Little, little tree you are. Sorry, Brian.
Timber.
Timber.
Usually more. Tree quality.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, they, and we had a kickoff meeting for the inventory project on the seventeenth. I planned to attend, but something came up and I was not able to attend. So hopefully it all went well. Next meeting is September sixteenth.
Okay. Those of you who saw the newspaper, this past week, we had the companion who's doing the audit, the inventory, of all the trees throughout town, and we also included the parks as well. And we will end up, when this is all completed, with a nice GIS software program that will have every tree identified, located in town and in our parks, and also the condition of it, and we'll be able to academically, the Parkport will be able to academically keep inventory and control, and we have saddled the Parkport with keeping that up and working a system with our citizens as well as our staff, plus Duke, anybody else who interfaces with the trees to make sure we keep the system very accurate once we have it in place. This was possible through the efforts of Eric Binninger, who, oh, we're so privileged to have him on the Tree Board. He works for the DNR. Like our student name, about tree, he doesn't know. You know, if you want to ask him a question, be prepared to find out how trees first started, okay? He knows it all. And he was instrumental in helping us put together and get a grant from the DNR to the feds to put this program in place. from the DNR, the feds, to put this program in place. So we're looking forward to it.
Indiana Department of Forestry and the US Forestry.
Pardon me?
The Indiana Department of Forestry and the US Forestry.
Yes.
Because we have to make sure we get that public information out there also. So there'll be some public, some press releases coming out. Kind of warning citizens of when these guys will be around. You'll see some safety vests and pa, tablets as they go around inventorying everything. So if you see somebody in front of your house and they've got a tablet and their vehicle should be clearly marked that they're with Lake-
Yeah, Lake-
Great Lakes.
Great Lakes.
Urban.
Urban Development or something.
Forestry Development, I believe. It's a very long name, so we just call them Great Lakes. But they'll be in, they won't be here until after Labor Day, correct?
Right.
Yeah. So after Labor Day, you'll see them milling around the city with tablets and vests on checking all the trees out.
And if you see someone who doesn't have all that equipment and nomenclature and they're taking notes and pictures and everything, they're probably just casing your house.
Ten!
Call Andy.
Yes, no, call Andy, call Andy Schatz. No, actually, no, they, they went to, these folks went to great detail to tell us, to tell us what their personnel would look like because, you know, we've had folks come through the community that weren't, you know, they weren't casing the house, but they didn't look very official. And we get calls, and some of them be the utility folks. Duke had an independent contractor coming through, taking the condition of the poles. Boy, he had a beard down to here and didn't have anything official on him, no badge, and was taking pictures. My gosh, somebody is in my yard taking pictures. So, you know, it raises a concern. So the, these folks, then they were very professional to tell us how this would be handled. We were appreciative of that. Okay, Brian, EMS?
I don't know.
Okay, sorry, you said that, did you?
No, I didn't, no.
Is there anything else with the tree board?
No, nothing else with the tree board. Okay, I don't have anything else, EMS.
Water board, John?
Yes, Chase, don't feel bad, I did read the water board. But I did read, I did read, don't be nuts, of the water board. And the most important thing is, anybody needs to know about the water board, everything's running well at the water board. Terry's keeping it going great. Everything's running smooth, the meeting was short. And that's about all I have to say about it.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, Derek? Sure. I'm a smart ass, whatever. Okay, we don't have any ADA concerns. Anything from the legal department?
Just briefly, for the council members, the state of Indiana has tweaked the open door law with regard to remote meetings and how that's going to work in the future. We've all kind of gotten a taste of that during, during COVID. And there's a, there's a set of restrictions that apply when we're not in a state of emergency, local or otherwise. And since we are still now, those don't apply, but eventually, the shorthand version is this, when we're not in a state of emergency, members of a governing body will still be able to participate remotely. There are some conditions on that, you have to be able to be seen and heard by the public. And any vote then has to be a roll call vote, the minutes will need to reflect move voted. And there are restrictions about, you know, you can't, you can't do more than fifty percent of your meetings that way. But if you're, you know, if you're traveling and you don't want to miss a meeting, the city can arrange for you to participate remotely. And your appearance counts towards the forum, your vote counts as a vote. But, but I won't go into all the restrictions about it. But for now, we're still under a state of emergency. And so it's even kind of more permissive than, than usual. I think in the long term, as, as people, people who serve on one board tend to get asked eventually to serve on some other board. And I don't know, for most of you, this is probably not the first one to go around with some civic service. And I think it is changing the culture, COVID is, is changing the culture in a permanent way about how accepting the state is, how accepting the public is of some level of remote participation. So I think just, I can, I can fill in more details as those come up. But for right now, we are still under a governing state of emergency. And so you could have had the entire meeting rolling if you wanted to. But even going forward, once we're out of that, I say this now because as COVID numbers increase, if, if we get to a point where only two of you can come in person, but others feel well enough to, to call in, you legitimately can still have a meeting. And so it's not a, it's, it's not something that simply will be completely discarded even once the state of emergency is over. So just keep that in mind.
You said, you said we need to be video or just audio?
When, when it goes into place, as when there's not a state of emergency, the normal rule of statute is you need to be both, you need to be seen and heard as, as if you were, you were here. And also, if it, if it is purely visit, let's say we're teleconferencing the entire meeting, obviously there has to be meaningful participation for the public to observe all that. Doesn't change it into a public hearing, they're still there to observe. But I know you've got some of that set up already, trying to do that with you. But it's going to be more than just a COVID-only thing. Some, we're going to see some remnants of that last on for a while as part of the ADA.
Let's hope we don't have to get too deep into those weeds. I do know one thing, man, with all the uncertainty and things about statutes and what we can do and can't do regarding meetings, I just hope you don't get sick. We certainly call on you lots to research these things, and I thank you much for that.
The changes are interesting. I'd rather not be the test case.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Well said, well said. Do I have any other thing from the council?
Did we set up a time for the meeting? For the article about the meeting? You know, so we can discuss our-
Since you have Eric here.
Well, okay, for the first payout, we'll have ten thousand dollars to do.
We've got to figure out what to do with the rest of it, that's a time limit, right?
No. What I was wanting to do is actually establish a date so that we can formally plan and actually put the plan together. As far as the fifty thousand for the health department, that's, that's already taken care of. This is more getting a study session date that we can include Eric or Tyler, whoever that you want to send.
I didn't, you didn't have that on line. No, you're fine.
There's another one laying there somewhere that was yours. Reece probably stole it. Well, Ted, because right now she's Ted and Kay. I did!
You can take John for the- The only one, this is the one. Okay, yeah. What's, what's September look like to you folks?
It's gonna be warm.
If you, if you go with the protocol, technically, you guys will look at September fourteen.
No, I'm just saying.
Now, my, my question is, do you guys want to keep it later or earlier?
Yeah. Earlier would be better for me. Okay. Cause I don't get to leave until Monday.
What, what times, I mean, what time do you guys want? I, I'm only asking because selfishly, Sophie hasn't sent us that job down. We just want to know about the delay. There it is!
How about four o'clock on the fourteen? Everybody make that?
Four o'clock on the fourteen?
Derek, could you make that?
Eric, does that work for you? Yeah. Would you like Attorney Perkins here as well?
Sure.
Are you available?
Four o'clock, I think I can do probably one or two, an hour, another ninety minutes.
That's fine.
I think all those guys would prefer to keep it under sixty minutes.
Absolutely, we will, we'll make sure the-
We just won't let Ted come and it'll go really quick.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Who's second? I-